Six thirty. We're gonna jump to number four on our agenda, which is the educational presentation. We don't have a forum, so we can't vote on anything or approve any minutes or anything. So, we're expecting a couple of the members here within the next five minutes, we hope. So, in the meantime, welcome, like I said, and we'll go to the educational presentation for the high school students during a movie presentation. And I'm not sure, Mark?
Thank you very much.
Turn it over to you, Dr.
Thank you, Larry. I'm gonna try to force a voice out.
There's a few of us, right?
Yeah. But thank you very much. Just wanna give some context for this educational presentation. In my AP Language and Composition class, we've had a project that's been going on for several years now called Champions of Change. And you may have seen some of these essays, which we posted for a couple of years in the hallway over here. But this year, we took the extra step of having students use their iPads to make an argument through a visual medium. And so, there are about eight students who would like to show their films to you. And Ms. Lisa Palowski is here to show hers about iPad use in the high school. I thank her very much for being here. Ms. Ellie Demmons will be here another time, but was not able to get all of the tech glitches put in place or resolved. So, I'm gonna show, I'm gonna show an iMovie by someone I know by the name of Nick Glory, who conceded to have his show here in lieu of Ellie's. So, I do wanna say that the reason we do this project is it's a critical thinking exercise. A lot of the common standards, a lot of the common core standards get at argument and an ability to make an effective argument. And, you know, it's all about being an informed citizen. Actually, that's one of the learning goals of the AP Language course, being an informed citizen, able to make effective arguments. So, it's all about finding things about the school system that might be improved and making a reasonable and positive case for change. So, we do wanna also recognize that Lisa was part of the team who brought the award of this being an Apple Distinguished School for the next several years. She was a major player on that team, working with Barbara Greenstone, so please welcome her. You're gonna hook her into the library.
iPads should be charged every night because they should be used every day. In a recent, in a recent survey taken by my school over school reforms, 21 percent of my schoolmates said that they never or rarely use their iPads. And 26 percent of them said that they only use their iPads occasionally. In my school, Boothby Region High School, we have a one-to-one iPad system. This means that every student enrolled in my school is given their own iPad to assist them in their studies. iPads are full of endless opportunities, note-taking abilities, e-textbooks, researching abilities, and countless educational applications. We have such an amazing tool in our grasp, why are we not using them to their full potential? I am a junior at Boothby Region High School, and I have been a part of this one-to-one iPad system for three years. Personally, I have found the iPads extremely useful because of the apps provided to me by the school and for their portability. However, I have noticed that a lot of my peers have only used their iPads when a teacher specifically tells them to. When a teacher does ask the class to use their iPads, most of the time it's to read something or do research. Many teachers feel that most students can pick them up and know what to do, as was told to me by Barbara Greenstone. Yet, when a teacher actually assigns an assignment on the iPads, everyone struggles, and we often have to call the tech advisors to come help us. Truth is, most kids have very little knowledge of the iPads, especially in an educational aspect. Students don't know how to use the iPads to their full potential, so they don't. Since the initial distribution of iPads, teachers have started doing afternoon workshops, as described by Barbara Greenstone. However, she said that most of them are quite basic. The basic training was needed at first, but now both students and teachers know the basics. We must have used the more complicated educational applications, such as Notability and Inspiration. An increase in iPad training, however, would depend on the funding agreements and scheduling of administrators. Many schools that have implemented iPads into their education systems have not succeeded. So have we. But I think our school has the potential to do so much more with these iPads. In the document Teaching, Learning, and Living with iPads, a K-12 school talks about how they found success with using iPads in their music program. However, they didn't just give the kids iPads, they taught the kids how to use individual apps. In their paper, they list dozens of suggested apps that include Cleartone, Fourscore, Bloom, and many more, as was said by the author Riley. Our shop teacher, Chip Spun, for example, uses them to tune guitars and measure wavelength. However, despite the teachers that do utilize the iPads, the school-wide survey showed that 44 percent of my school has not found the iPads useful to their education. My school does provide a bunch of educational applications that would serve us all well if we used them. One of my favorite applications is Notability, which is so versatile that you can use it for note-taking, but you can also use it for drawing, as described by Barbara Greenstone, our tech advisor. I use this app for a variety of reasons. However, few of my classmates take advantage of this app because although it may have been pointed out to them, it has never been explained to them. Teachers are also supplied with applications such as eBackpack. EBackpack gives teachers the opportunity to give students easy access to documents that they provide. Although we have not quite mastered these applications, there are still a few that could be added that would be helpful for students, one of which is Inspiration. This app is amazing for note-taking and thought-organizing capabilities. Inspiration is known to be extremely helpful for students who need a visual graph to comprehend cause and effect and compare and contrast, as said by a reviewer named Windman. A few teachers have explained to me that we don't have a set requirement for iPad use. I understand that. Every class is different, and you can't require the same thing for each class. But we shouldn't have to require iPad use. Teachers should want to use them. To truly embrace the iPad's potential, I think we should invest in electronic textbooks, e-textbooks. There are many people that believe that no one likes reading off of iPads. However, in the recent school survey taken by my school, most people didn't care whether or not their textbooks were electronic. Plus, only 17 percent of students were strongly against them. In the document Electronic Resources and E-Textbook in High School Curriculum, the author Craig McMichael discusses the results of an iPad curriculum that was put in place in Detroit Catholic High School. He liked the easy translation tool because it enables forward students to access the reading. This document also talks about how beneficial electronics readings are to kids with disabilities. "In this school, the text-to-speech support increased unit in quiz reading comprehension performance with a large effect," said McMichael. E-textbooks would also help us financially in the long run. Our principal, Principal Welch, told me that we lose a lot of money in lost textbooks and damaged textbooks. Thankfully, he feels that within the next couple of years, there's going to be a large jump towards e-textbooks. We don't have one big problem with the iPads that can be fixed with one change. We have a variety of small imperfections that have led to a large amount of lost potential. This school would be greatly improved if everyone was taught how to use the apps and tools of the iPad. After that point, we can start to introduce new things such as e-textbooks that would improve our school even more. One of the most common problems in an iPad curriculum is that schools can't afford the iPads. This problem is addressed in the document Electronic Resources and E-Textbooks in High School Curriculum, the document Teaching, Learning, and Living with iPads, as well as many others. We have an amazing opportunity to utilize these iPads, and we're wasting it.
Thank you. And Mark, did you, uh?
Well, I didn't know. I told students that you might have some questions for them.
Yeah, I don't know if we wanted to do both of them. Ask, does anyone have any particular questions for this area? I think we're kind of absorbing it. Then go along with that one, then we might have questions after.
All right. So, I'm gonna project now my son Nick's movie, which is calling for a stricter eligibility policy. He's the first to admit that he should have done a little more polishing. You're gonna see a couple of places where it's, he didn't do as much editing as he should, but you'll get, you'll get the paper card.
Is this your first time seeing it?
No. I've seen it, and I've been encouraged to, but I do wanna also thank very much Sean, who helped me with this process and the filming, because I'm pretty much a late person when it comes to doing iMovies. And of course, I really wanna thank also Barbara Greenstone. She was absolutely instrumental in doing this project. And one of the parts of this, everybody, is that students, when they had done a draft of this iMovie, sat in the library here and watched on the big screen each student's iMovie. And Barbara had set up on a separate screen a back-channel function, which means that students off of their iPads could comment real-time, and it created a script that was sent to each student about how to make, you know, further improvements. So, it's really brought a lot of people together.
All right.
I don't think we have the eligibility to punish kids. I think we have the eligibility to encourage kids to do better.
I think I started a little bit too far along.
Quote, "I don't think we have the eligibility to punish kids. I think we have the eligibility to encourage kids to do better." Interview with Mr. Crocker. Project EAT, Educate, Act Thrive. A survey done on both middle school and high school students showed sport team participation was independently associated with a higher GPA for high school girls and boys, Journal of School Health. Athletics and athletic eligibility have direct ties to success in student academics. I believe our current eligibility policy here at Boothby Region High School is too lenient. If we don't push this policy to its challenging capacity, we will never know the full potential it might hold for improving our student academics. I'm calling for a stricter policy as well as a possible implementation of an addition to the rule. I'm an athlete as well as a student here at VRHS, and I see firsthand how our current policy is taken advantage of by students at this school. Recently, our school switched class schedules. We went from juggling eight classes at a time to focusing on only four. The rule for a while now has been you can fail one class, but when you fail two or more, you cannot participate in extracurricular activities anymore. Although our eligibility policy could be more firm, it was mildly appropriate fit into our past schedule. Now with half the classes, shouldn't students have half the chance to fail? Dean of Students and Athletic Director Alan Crocker agreed that, given our new schedule, the eligibility policy- Recently, our school switched class schedules. We went from juggling eight classes at a time to focusing on only four. The rule for a while now has been you can fail one class, but when you fail two or more, you cannot participate in extracurricular activities anymore. Although our current eligibility policy could be more firm, it was mildly appropriate fit into our past schedule. Now with half the classes, shouldn't students have half the chance to fail? Dean of Students and Athletic Director Alan Crocker agreed that, given our new schedule, the eligibility policy needs to be more firm. This graphic comes from a school-wide survey taken by students at VRHS. A total of 120 students took the survey. On this particular question, 37 students said our current eligibility policy is not strict enough. I find this to be a remarkable statistic, given that these 120 students are the same people who likely would not want a stricter policy set on them. Although this may be true, 37 of them were able to admit it's too lenient. Furthermore, I believe that the 83 people would lean towards my viewpoint as well if they were given some additional info and heard my proposal. The last number provided by the graph shows that only 6 percent of those who answered the question find the policy too strict. One of the biggest goals here is to make sure the eligibility standard challenges students enough that it's having a positive effect on their education. 45 percent of the students participating in the school-wide survey said our current eligibility, our current eligibility policies don't fulfill this need. If the policy isn't working to encourage students to do better in classes so they can succeed in other activities, why is it even there? 57 students agree that we need a policy that will better push kids to excel in academics along with extracurricular activities. This is additional proof that our current system is simply a pushover. In my interviews with administrators and teachers at VRHS, it became clear a change is not only essential, but near. When asked if he thinks being able to fail one class and still play sports is too lenient, Mr. Crocker answered, quote, "Yes, especially with the new schedule, I absolutely do. I've actually been playing around with a lot of eligibility ideas that I think might work out," end quote. I asked Coach Deon if he thought the news, if he thought changing the policy to fail one class and you're ineligible would make kids more encouraged to do better with their grades, and he replied, quote, "I think they would have to be," end quote. Later in our interview, Mr. Deon said, quote, "One of the things I'm going to push for is that it's on the student. You say, hey, you need to get your grades up. You have a week to get your grade up, and if you don't, you're gonna..." A stricter eligibility policy means more respect to the kids in our school. We need to eliminate the leniency allowing kids to take advantage of our current system. Principal Welch has vocally told me he would be open to change, as well as Mr. Crocker and Mr. Deon, who spoke on behalf of many teachers here at VRHS. My proposal is that we reduce the amount of classes students are able to fail from one to none. I also think an implementation of the time period given to a kid who has just gotten ineligible is needed. This would give students the option. If they want to participate in extracurricular activities, they need to first satisfy the importance of their education. Policies similar to this are working for several other schools, as I mentioned, in Maine, and some of those schools are even, have even increased the required grade to 70 or above. I know this new policy will work for our school, and it needs to be implemented sooner than later. Our ultimate goal is to let students achieve their maximum potential in their academics while acknowledging the connection with their athletics.
Oh, pass on thanks to your son, Mark.
All right, well, for some reason couldn't be here tonight. But, yeah, I just, I wanna thank Mr. Carlson again, Ms. Greenstone, and Ms. Haynes, well the public mood of this project.
Does any, a thank you, Lisa. Does anyone have any questions for Lisa or anyone? Or thank you, Lisa, for doing this. It sounds like from the, it's a lot of just getting used to, whether the student's getting used to the iPads or the teacher's getting used to using the iPads.
Yeah, I feel like just more exposure is needed because we have a lot of great apps on here, and then it's never explained to the kids. They're just told that they're there, and they just resort to their old methods instead of trying new ones.
How did you make your surveys?
The surveys, we did a class survey where we all put two or three questions about what we wanted, and we sent it out to the school and made it a core requirement. And then it was, the results were sent back to us and put into graph form and distributed to us.
Thanks. Any other questions? Well, I think it's all kind of good, we're soaking it in, but it's good to hear this, you know, because we are trying to get the apps to use, and I think it's good for everyone to hear what you have to say. So, thank you. And, son, tell him thank you for that, because I think, you know, as far as the information that we've got, he's given us information, and I think it's something that's worthwhile to look into. By him giving us that information this way, you know, Alan and Dan and Sean have all, you know, had their influence, but it's just something, I guess, we just kinda ask you folks to follow up with.
Yeah, we're in the process of doing that. Our last faculty meeting, the focus was athletic eligibility.
Yeah.
So, we're in the process of doing that. Just felt with the new schedule, changing things around.
Right. Takes a little time.
A little too much at once.
Little heads up. Well, good. Well, thanks. Any other question? Okay. All right. Well, thanks. I think we'll go back to one and call the meeting to order, now that we have four of us here, and we're kinda backtracking. But now that we do have a forum, thank you for making it from Augusta, Kentucky.
I drove fast.
No, you drove. Recommend the school committee approve the minutes of the January 28 meeting. Do we have a motion? Sean?
Second.
All in favor? No change or additions to the agenda. Again, we've had the educational presentation. Thank you. Public participation?
Thank you, Larry. I'm gonna be brief, because you can't hear me anyway. We have three more teachers who would like to speak today tonight. First, we'll have Joyce Roy, followed by Mary Miller and Maime Anthony.
I'm Joyce Roy. I hold a master's degree in education and teach in the social studies department at Boothby Region High School. I've been an administrator and teacher in the system for 33 years, and before that, taught in Massachusetts. Three of my children graduated from this high school with high honors and went on to achieve in college and in professions. They're very successful in public health and the creative arts. I've been supported by the administration to design new courses and refine others. I've had a chance to serve on committees to enhance the profession. One of these committees, recertification, keeps track of teachers, mentors, and required courses to stay up to date in our field. We have staffs to show the number of weekends and summer days spent by educators, and they are many, and well over the minimum required by the state for a majority of our teachers. Lifelong learning seems to reside in our genes. One of the first lessons I teach to each new class is to deconstruct the word responsibility as the ability to respond. We time reading and note-taking from texts and articles to see how to organize and assist students in finishing their assignments. And their responsibility, their ability to respond and learn, is a choice made by the student based on their values and the importance of the work. Over the 33 years, I have observed my colleagues' ability to respond. Most have gone out of their way to organize local, international field trips, extra help, and highly organized experiential projects, such as the iMovies we've just seen. They've not only talked the talk, but walked the walk with students and parents. What I have not seen are school committee members observing classes in the schools. I invite you to walk the walk with us and take responsibility as representatives of the residents in the second wealthiest town in Lincoln County, and to work with us to negotiate a fair contract for the work we do. Thank you.
Mary.
Hi, my name is Mary Miller. If you don't know me, and I hold a master's in music and a CAGS in educational leadership, and I'm still in school, so I'm a lifelong learner. I hope to bring that to the students. Thank you for giving me this time to speak about why I teach and why I'm dedicated to this job. First of all, I love the students. I want to help guide them through their high school years so they are successful in the future and can look back on their high school experience with fondness. Every day, the students amaze me. Recently, I took students to a music festival and saw the incredible experience they had and watched them learn music in ensembles that were filled with students just like them for a performance in an 800-seat-filled auditorium. And it reminded me why I do this job. It's not about me, it's about being present in the lives of young adults and watching them mature. Here, I've been able, here, Boothby Region High School, I have been able to, along with valuable colleagues, to provide experiences such as European travel or to Boston for a Broadway show, some of which these experiences they may never have again, but ones that will surely stay with them the rest of their lives. Next weekend, I will bring 24 students to the Regional Drama Festival, where they will mingle with students from eight other schools to share their love of theater. I know they love going to this festival, and I love bringing them. At VRHS, I began teaching music and drama, but now I teach an array of fascinating subjects that I love sharing with the students. I love theater, I love music, I love history, all of which I'm passionate about staying current with. I feel that I've been able to pass my knowledge on to students, but best of all, every day they teach me something new. I am fortunate to be supported by my administration, and I am proud to be a teacher at such a fine school with such fine faculty. That's why I teach here. Thank you.
Maime Anthony, I teach over at the middle school, and I do not like to be the center of attention, so the fact that I'm standing here is fairly significant. And the fact that I'll be standing here for like 10 minutes is even more significant. I apologize in advance. I think it's safe to say that everyone in this room values public education. It's the reason we're here. Public education is broken. One of the reasons it's broken is that teaching in the United States is not a profession that is respected, despite the fact that many of us have advanced degrees. We're not respected by the public. We often hear, "Easiest job ever, you just work eight to three and have summers off." We're not respected by politicians who continuously throw mandates at us, proving again and again that we are not trusted to make decisions about how to perform the job we were trained to do. We're not respected by school committees all over the United States who do not compensate us fairly for the important work we do. Salaries, benefits, and retirement that do not keep up with the rest of the job market are making it impossible for young, bright people to choose education as a career and making it difficult for those who teach to stay with it. Add to that the lack of trust in teachers demonstrated by the mandates of the politicians and bureaucrats, and public education has reached a crossroads. Over the past several weeks, some of my colleagues have spoken eloquently about the reasons they teach and the important work we do. I would like to share the reason that despite my lifelong interest in teaching and learning, I chose not to be a full-time teacher until my 30s. When I was a teenager, a close family friend was a reading specialist and assistant principal. I always looked forward to long conversations with her about teaching and learning, the importance of strong teachers in schools, and the methods that were most effective for a variety of learners. However, even with a strong interest in education, I never once considered teaching as a profession because to me, respect was always important. If people didn't like me, that was their prerogative, but it was important to me that I was respected as someone who was hardworking and capable. Everyone knows that as individuals, teachers are loved and appreciated, but for the most part in this country, teachers are not respected. As a kid, I knew it was the doctors, the lawyers, the engineers, and the business people who were respected. I knew because I went to school committee meetings as a high school student and learned that intelligent, caring teachers, my teachers, had no power to make decisions about the school in which they worked. I knew because my teachers always had a fight on their hands when it was time for a new contract. I knew because my teachers drove old cars and wore the same few outfits to school day after day. I knew because my teachers had summer jobs mowing the lawns or waiting the tables of the doctors, the lawyers, the engineers, and the business people to make ends meet. Those who can do, those who can't teach, was always the popular perception. So, I ignored the fact that I loved working with kids, that I loved discussing educational practices and policies, because I could be something better, someone people respected. The lack of respect and fair compensation for teachers has led us down a slippery slope. Teachers are employed, governed, and regulated for the most part by noneducators. Imagine a group of laypeople telling doctors how to do their jobs. Imagine regulators saying, "Well, we need a healthier America, so all patients must attain the same minimum score in a fitness test, no matter what their pre-existing conditions may be." Sounds ridiculous, doesn't it? That is what is happening in public education. At a time when employers are looking for workers who can think critically and creatively, who can work well with a variety of people in a variety of situations, the government has chosen to take teaching out of the hands of teachers. Mandates are turning education professionals and the students with whom we work into automatons. The inherent lack of respect for teachers meant that when scores were down on international tests, rather than looking at the economy or the fact that many students, yes, even our students, come to school tired and hungry every day and go home to situations that would make you cringe, the government decided to blame teachers. Students in the United States haven't been performing as well as their counterparts in other countries, countries where teachers are respected and compensated, like doctors, lawyers, engineers, and business people, countries where not all children are even required to take the test. The act of blaming teachers has created a boom for private education companies. The private education companies create the mandated tests. The private education companies create the materials schools use to prepare for the tests. The private education companies create the reporting systems schools use to comply with the mandates. These companies have taken advantage of the lack of respect for teachers, and public education has been on a downhill slide ever since. Mine is a long story, but in a nutshell, I got a degree in biology, not education, and after my time as a Peace Corps volunteer, spent years searching for meaningful work. I did not consider teaching until I listened to a wise friend who told me that the best way to change the perceptions about public education was by becoming part of it. So, here I am, and I love what I do, working with students, planning and tweaking lessons to help them understand not only the science concepts, but also the importance of science in their daily lives. in their daily lives and the role and understanding of science plays in becoming informed citizens. Sadly, more and more, my time is being taken away from that important work, and I'm being asked to do things that, based on my training and experience, are contrary to what I believe is good practice. A student came to science class recently with a small speaker for one of his games, and he said, "I noticed this has a magnet in it. How do speakers work?" I gave him a quick response, but unsatisfied by the interaction, I did what teachers everywhere do. I got on Amazon, and I ordered some wire and magnets. I asked the students for yogurt cups, and I brought some D batteries in from home so we could make speakers. This is the reason I love teaching, showing students that curiosity is valued, their questions are important, figuring out the way things work is worth our time. But as trust in teachers has eroded, some of my enthusiasm and planning time for such meaningful learning has been diminished by the fact that when planning a lesson, there are so many things to think about, I can't spend all my time on the lesson itself. Now, I must also consider the way it fits into my growth plan, the way it fits into the common core, the way it fits into the main learning results, the way it fits into the next-generation science standards, which Maine may or may not be adopting, the way it may be assessed on the MEAs, the Smarter Balance, the NAEP tests, and how many topics I need to get to before the testing dates. All of those things take time and energy away from the important parts of teaching and learning. The past few years, instead of having valuable time to meet with my colleagues, who are, in my opinion, the greatest resource of all, we are constantly besieged with meetings and trainings involving new mandates that do not measurably improve the quality of our teaching or the education of our students. I do not mean any of this as a complaint, merely to inform. I have always done what I've been asked to do, most of us have. As long as I've been teaching, there have been new mandates. Teachers follow them because we are told we must. However, because they are designed not by educators, who know what works, but by politicians or bureaucrats, they fall flat, and they've always vanished after a few years. Now, however, the mandates are coming so fast and furious, they are being piled one on top of another, and they are going to break the backs of communities, schools, teachers, and most importantly, students. It has gotten to the point where it is almost impossible to do all that we are asked to do and be good teachers. Good teaching is about helping students become critical thinkers and lifelong learners. It is about taking them as far as we can. Can we shoot for an arbitrary line drawn in the sand by bureaucrats? Absolutely. But good teachers know when a student is developmentally ready for certain content. We know that pushing beyond that can be, at best, counterproductive and, at worst, harmful. We are being asked to push many students beyond what they are ready for as a matter of course. Our schools are being held to standards that sound great to non-educators. To those of us who dedicate our lives to students, they sound dangerous. I realize that you, as school committee members, have a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers of this community. You also have a responsibility to help ensure that the children of this community receive the best education possible. If you get pressure from the people of this community to reduce teachers' benefits, to curtail the buying power of teachers, then we will work harder to educate you and the taxpayers about the reasons we are worth every penny. What confuses me is that although school committees always seem to contend teacher contracts, they never seem to challenge or even question the tens of thousands of dollars local districts are expected to pay to private education companies because of government mandates. Working under a current contract is very important to me. It demonstrates to me that I am valuable and I am respected. It ensures that our district will be able to hire and retain the best teachers possible. We absolutely need a contract. But I believe that right now, school committees all over the United States have an obligation to do more than provide us with fair compensation. Together, school committees have a great deal of power. You can be the people who come to understand and respect the professionals that we are, and you can be advocates for change. Seek us out. Ask us questions. Question the government mandates. I believe that the school committees across this country realize what teachers already know about the current state of education. If school committees start to question lawmakers, we might just save public education yet. There's a new saying in education circles these days, "Those who can teach, those who can't, pass laws about teaching." Be the change that public education needs right now. Start by treating us as respected professionals. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. (applause) Thank you all. We appreciate all the three comments, but I do have just a good comment I'd like to make. I heard "not appreciated, not respected." I feel that all of us, all of the teachers, the community, you guys are all appreciated as well as respected. I come from a family of teachers going back quite a few years. They taught because they loved it. They never made a lot of money, but they never once said they didn't feel respected. And I want to make you folks realize that you are respected by us and as well as by And we can go to Carl.
Winter sports are now over with cheering wrestling, nordic swimming, and basketball doing great in their championship meets and games. A band concert was held on February tenth with the sixth, seventh, eighth graders, as well as the high school in the auditorium. One act performers have been practicing and preparing for the Drama Festival next month on the fourth. The combined leadership group of the National Honor Society and Student Council has been fundraising for the CBS thirteen WGMU School Spirit Challenge and raised twenty-six hundred dollars, equating to about thirteen thousand pounds of food. With that, we have also started a food drive competition between the classes and faculty. We have planned the pep rally, filling it with activities and performances from the winter sports teams. Basketball will have their last game as a boys versus girls scrimmage. The lady dribblers will also perform their routine. And a combined middle school and high school pep band will play Rocky as students enter and will perform a Queen medley as well as Carry On My Wayward Son. The National Honor Society and Student Council will be gathering materials and will be decorating after-school tomorrow for when the WGMU News comes to broadcast our pep rally live for two hours in a shared airtime with Windsor High School.
Oh, great. Sounds good.
How many pounds did West Cassett have?
Um...
They won, I think, last year.
Last year, they raised about eleven thousand dollars, which would be fifty-five thousand.
Ooh.
Good. What sport are you doing right now, Carl? Are you doing cross country?
Swimming, just ended.
So it's kind of a lull time for a lot of...
Yep.
Thanks, Carl. And if I have nothing, then we can go to Mark.
I don't have a lot for you tonight, because basically it's our third day back from the February vacation, but I do have a couple of things that are exciting that I would like to share with you. Our math counts team, I believe I reported to you in our January meeting that they had gone to the regional competition in Fairfield, and I'm pleased to share with you that out of that particular competition, we have a seventh grader, Will Perkins, who finished in the top twenty in the regional, and that automatically qualifies him for the state competition. And I believe he's going to be competing this Saturday again in Fairfield, is where that takes place, and when, you know, depending on how he finishes, I'll be glad to share that with you. Again, I'd like to, you know, compliment Rita Arnold and Desiree Scorsia-Halter, you know, again, shows a combination of teachers from both schools working together because they've worked hard preparing the kids. And again, Will shows us that, you know, the hard work pays off, so congratulations. From our, from the Booth Bay Region Elementary School Physical Education Department, I have a couple of good things to announce. Mr. Gory will be happy to know that Tim Rice and Lauren Brown received a grant from the United States Tennis Association that will allow them to purchase some equipment to beef up our tennis program within the physical education department more than they already have. In addition to this, and this is probably a real good year to do this, Mr. Rice, over the break, purchased twenty pairs of snowshoes, and that'll be another addition to the physical education program, you know, as a way to expose kids to that kind of activity. This was, the money from this that paid for this was from, in the fall, when our teachers get, like, flu shots and things like that. Sometimes we'll reimburse some monies for that, and that's supposed to go back towards into healthy activities. So that was one area that we used this money for to help out the PE program. As has been probably discussed a little bit tonight, today we started a little bit of our introduction. Shaun held the training today for our teachers in grades three through eight to expose us to the online intricacies of the Smarter Balance assessments that are coming up in the, basically, it's going to take us, because we have students in grades three through eight who are being tested, it's going to take us the course of probably most of April to take care of that. And like I said, we're just in the beginning stages of being exposed to it, and I'll let you know as the aches and pains work the, work their way out of that. The last thing I have to share with you tonight is, I can tell you, spring is getting closer, even though it doesn't look like it outside. Today, I finished working on my first class list for next year, so I know when we, when we start working on those things, we're getting close, so. Anything that I've shared with you that you would like more explanation or whatever, I'd be glad to answer for you.
I'd just like to, you know, I think it's great with the tennis, and Mark, I'm sure that, you know, they have life, you know, we keep teaching lifelong learning, you know, and tennis is something, as well as snowshoeing. You know, if you folks don't do it at the school to help them, sometimes these kids may never even have the availability or access to, you know, try some of these, you know, and these are something that they can take with them for the rest of their lives. It's relatively inexpensive. If anyone's ever been downhill skiing, it's quite expensive. But you can go out now in Booth Bay, don't have to travel, go snowshoeing, you know, and eventually they'll be able to play tennis.
Hopefully, more schools have it. With the snowshoe.
Snowshoe tennis.
We should have done that.
So, you know, I just think it's great where they provide this opportunity for the kids to be able to use these, so. Any other questions? Thanks, Mark. And Brandon's off at class again. I do have a cookie in here that's been here for three months waiting for him. And let's see, we can go to Dan.
Okay. My report will be pretty brief this evening, too, but I want to piggyback on a few things Carl said about the School Spirit Challenge. Our number's up a little bit. I haven't quite shared some of our latest tally, so we're up a little bit more than that. The kids have worked so hard. Carl has put a ton of time and work in our leadership team. I can't name them all, or I'll miss somebody and I'll feel really bad, but Manon's here. She's done a great job. Brian Dion, Alan, they've put a ton of time into the events leading up to this, to raising money for a great cause. The community's been outstanding as always, and Saturday should be a lot of, Friday, rather, I'm thinking about Saturday. Friday will be a lot of fun. It's a lot of excitement, a lot of school spirit, and, you know, we're a, we're a small school, but we're a fierce school and have a lot of pride, and it'll be great. If anybody has a chance to come on up down, come check it out, we'd love to have you, or check us out on the web when it's, when it's going on, so. And I want to mention thank you to the Interact Club, which is a youth club sponsored by the local Rotary Club. They held a fundraising supper last week and raised five hundred dollars towards this, towards this endeavor, so a big thanks to them and to Debbie Graves, who oversees that group. On the screen here, you see, I just want to show you very briefly, if you remember, four years ago, Lauren Graham got our school involved in a partnership with Australian Schools that was sponsored by the U.S. State Department. We are involved in this, again, we're actually, our school and the school from Tasmania, Australia, are the only two returning schools back to the program, and again, sponsored by the U.S. State Department. And this is the webpage, kind of talking about the process. There are six modules that look at water usage and responsible stewardship for environmental resources, et cetera, and it looks a lot at compiling data, doing comparisons between our water usage, other schools throughout the country, and schools in Australia. And she has communication and sets up times with the students to communicate with those students over in Australia, so this, you can see the school is listed here, Booth Bay Region High School, and then schools in Tasmania, schools in California, Louisiana, all over the country, really. And we have our own school page on the site. There we are. And a little video there from Lauren, and it has some statistics here, and anybody can access this, Mark. I was actually thinking we should probably try to get this on the Seahawk script sometime.
Yeah.
So you can see some data here. Tasmania is still collecting theirs, and as you can see, she's still in the second of the six stages, so it's a great, real-world application kind of project. The students learn about, students from other cultures, they learn about doing research, they learn about reporting research out, and I just think it's really cool. Got a own page on there, so I wanted to, wanted to share that with you, so. New Hope for Women, organization in Portland's going to be sending, they got a grant to get performances into schools around various contemporary topics. We're going to have some professional actors here doing a play for the school on the effects of cyberbullying on March twelfth. Again, that's sort of a grant from New Hope for Women, so thank you to them. As Carl mentioned, we got our band concert on the tenth. That was a lot of fun to get to see the middle school kids and the high school kids all performing. Usually, we do it at the Opera House, which is, we're very thankful to Kathy Sherrill and those groups for letting us use the Opera House, but this year, we, this time around, we thought we'd use the auditorium and let them perform on their home turf, and it was a good experience. Mark Phillips is doing a really nice job, taking over our band program, doing a really nice job. Wanted to update you, I said I would bring some statistics around our new bell schedule. As I reported previously, we did see an increase in the amount of students attaining honor roll status in the new schedule, and as I sat down and looked at the numbers of failure rates, we saw a twenty-five percent decrease in the number of students who failed at least one course from this first semester compared to last year's first semester, so I think that's a significant, to give it a number, fourth-plus students failing classes, so really happy to report that. As Mark said, in the process, Jim Burns and I sat down and put the, started putting the process together, new class sign-ups and new courses for next year, and teachers are reviewing the course studies and making any revisions necessary, and we're going to get the ball rolling sooner than later, and I'm in the process of planning our new student orientation, which this will be the third or fourth year we're holding an evening which parents come in, learn about the school, the students, and get ready to come be ninth graders here next year. That's a really fun night. When we get the date scheduled, I'll be sure to let you know. Last thing I have is Gretchen Elder was representing Booth Bay Region High School this evening at the Poetry Out Loud competition. She was the winner for our school, and she's at the regional championships at Ambedi Academy. Haven't heard how she's done yet, but I'm sure she did a great job. And that's, that's all I have to report on at this time. If you have to answer any questions.
Also, Danny, I have one for Carl, just kind of piggybacking off, but how did you like the class schedule this year compared to from last year?
I definitely think it was easier, but it did, with the AP classes that I took, which are AP Calculus, PC, and AP English Literature and Compositions, it caused me to take independent study, Spanish Four, but other than that, I think, I think it's all easier to deal with.
To deal with.
Yeah.
Good. Thanks, Carl.
I like when a student who's taking three AP courses says it's easier.
He's got a full load and then some.
Yeah. Al.
All right. Sport seasons are done for the winter. Our boys' basketball had a great season, they were sixteen and two. They were the Mountain Valley Conference runners-up. Unfortunately, they lost the first round to Augusta, I guess quite possibly the best number-eight team I've ever seen. You know, they were so good, they played in the Western Main Finals. So it was a heartbreaking loss, came down to three points. We had John Hepburn named a first-team All-Star, Abel Brier and Evan Hepburn were named to the second-team Mountain Valley Conference All-Stars. Julian and Jacob Leonard were on, will mention, so that's five of our boys on the conference All-Star team, and John and Evan also are going to represent us at the senior All-Star Game, McDonald's All-Star Game at Hussin in a couple weeks. Girls' basketball also had a great season. They ended with a seventeen-and-one record, which I think is possibly our best regular season record ever. They won the Mountain Valley Conference Championship, which I think is the first time we've ever done that since nineteen ninety-seven, certainly the first time we've done it since we've had a conference game. It used to be the conference champion was based on regular season, they just handed it to you. Now there's a game, it's the first time we've won that. Tanner Grove was named co-coach of the year for the Mountain Valley Conference. Morgan Crocker was named the first-team All-Star. Sarah Dergan and Paige Brown, who's only a freshman, named to the second team. Kegney O'Brien, Hannah Morley were named, all will mention, so that's ten of our players that were named to the conference All-Star team, which is, you know, pretty impressive. And Morgan Crocker will be representing Booth Bay. And Morgan Crocker will be representing Booth Bay McDonald's All-Star game also. Nordic had a great season, they finished third in the Mountain Valley Conference. Carla Cardi and Julie Palillo both finished in the top six, which made them conference All-Stars. So that's different, it's not a vote, that's based on your finishing. And I mean, you think about, of all those skiers, you have to finish in the top six to be in all-conference, and we had two of them. The state meet, they finished eighth overall, and Carla Cardi was our top performer there. Swimming, we had Brenna Alley, Nicole LeBruck, Abby Case, Emma Pierce, and Carl Alamo all qualified for the state meet. And our girls relay team also qualified, which included Megan Hamlet. The girls placed 19th out of 2016s, and it's a Class B state meet. And Don Strout was named the KVAC Coach of the Year. He coaches our team as well as the Lincoln Academy team at the same time, and he was named Coach of the Year. In wrestling, due to injuries and illness, we only sent five wrestlers, but we've got four of them on the podium. Four of our five, we had two runners-up, Antonio Mollo and Howie Carter. Draco Peasley was a third-place finisher, Dylan Peters took fourth. We were the eighth-place team in what's going to be the last Class C wrestling meet, because next year we're going to two classes. For this month is, March actually is Youth Art Month. Summer Chamberlain has an oil painting on display at the Portland Museum of Art for the entire month. And Kate Frynt has a painting on display at the MEA office in Augusta. Both students will be honored with certificate presentations and opening receptions. Summer Chamberlain on Saturday, March 7th, from 4:00 to 7:30 at the Portland Museum of Art. And Kate Frynt on March 8th, from 1:00 to 2:30 at the MEA office in Augusta. There's going to be a high school student art exhibit on display during the month of March at the Booth Bay Harvard Memorial Library. And there's going to be an art exhibit of both high school and elementary school hung at the St. Andrews New Physical Therapy Wing. Thank you, Manon, for giving me that information. And in drama, the One Act Competitions are March 6th and 7th at Oceanside East in Rockland. We're going to have a public performance here Wednesday night on March 4th at 7:00 in our auditorium, in the place called Ladies Night at the Globe. And there are 24 students participating, and that is put on by Ms. Miller. I know I went through that pretty quick, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I think that's great. I mean, the sports season's over, the participation season's not over for the kids. It sounds like all of you have a lot of stuff going on for the kids. And Manon, it sounds exciting for the time ahead, and Mary, too. So there's a lot of stuff going on.
One thing that always amazes me, how much we get the kids to participate here in everything. And, I mean, I just read off, and you know, Cherry hasn't done anything since our last meeting, but you know, they had a successful season in their regionals. And for our winter sports, for us to have so many sports offered, so many kids participating, for us to be so successful at them, I think it's pretty impressive. And then not to mention, you know, the One Acts are always wonderful, and the art products that come out here are beautiful, you know, it's just really an amazing thing.
That is, that's why it's nice to see the sports, because it's nice to see the other things going on, too, for the community likes it. So thank you, and kudos to you. Thanks. And we can go to Adult Ed Report to Maggie.
Okay. Last fall, well, last winter, we had 245 people who took classes, which was up from the previous year. We added extra sessions of cooking classes, because we had 94 people sign up. Everybody loves cooking. Hunter Safety had 24. Chip's presentation about Damasko Island, which I think this is the third or fourth time he's done it, had 15 people. We had a couple of classes that had to get canceled because the instructor had gotten ill, but most of the classes ran. And the Coast Guard classes are now becoming more popular, I think as the economy gets better and people are out boating more. There were several years where none of the boating courses went, but now we have, we had 11 in last year's class, and I've already got signups for the two classes this year. We had 17 people who took both Basic and Advanced Excel. And Lisa Smith teaches our iPad class, and she had eight people in that last year. The year before that, she had, I think, 11 or 12. So the adults are coming to that class. One of the things that was interesting is that the attendance in our learning center, not so much for help with skills for college, but for people who want their high school equivalency diploma was down last year. We had two students who completed their HICE and received their diplomas. But I think because the state changed from GED to HICE, and there was such a push in 2012 and 13 where we had seven and eight students complete, now there's a lag and a gap until people realize that the HICE isn't that hard. The state made it sound harder than it is. It's very similar to the GED. And they made it sound like it was going to go to a computer-based test immediately. They didn't do a good job. You know, I think they scared some people off. So it's going to take a while for us to get back some of the students that probably didn't come because they couldn't do GED.
Are people inquiring?
They're inquiring, but not, and it's not just here, it's all over the state. Everybody I've talked to, like, and we get little emails and things from different directors. Everybody's numbers are down for HICE testing and HICE prep. And it is, it's going to take, you know, a year or two, you know, probably this year and next year, before people realize, don't be scared by it. But we did have two students, and then we had another one this past fall, who got her HICE, did all five tests, and is now going to enroll in the CMCC nursing program. So I think if they're motivated, you know, or there's something they want to do, whether it's a better job, or college, or other training, eventually they'll see that they can't do it without their equivalency diploma. And this fall, we had less attendance than the previous year, but you never know. I mean, fall is a, everybody wants to get out in the winter, but people are still busy in the fall. But we did have 41 people in the cooking classes, 20 people in Hunter Safety. And we also had several people taking computer courses for work. A lot of the people that come to the Excel and Word classes are doing it because they need it for their job, or they're going to get another job. So those two classes have been very successful. And that's about all on that. Unless somebody has any questions.
Thanks, Maggie. People are set. Thanks.
Maggie, do you want to do your budget now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. You do, too? We do that all the time. Okay. Well, I hope that's good. Basically, it hasn't changed much. All I've done is pretty much adjust the lines as far as going back over two years of our budget and what we spent. I just adjusted lines, like for instance, the printing has gone up, but the class supplies has gone down. And one of the reasons for that is it's easier for cooking classes and some of the other classes, whether it's art or whatever. If the students pay the instructor the cost of supplies directly, rather than, you know, go through requisitions and purchase orders. And technology and software, we just, we did get the new computer, and we have Office 2010 and Windows 7 for my office, to replace the one that was 12 years old. And so we don't need much there. Trying to think what else is. Basically, it's the same, it only went up 1.25%. And of course, we never know what the state's going to do with subsidy. And, oh, the vocational salaries have gone down a little bit, only because we've condensed some, like, computer courses and things like that. But everything pretty much is the same.
Right in line. Good. And the cost share for the two towns has remained the same as well?
Exactly, yes, same. No increase.
So the amount that actually goes to the towns is down on the bottom where it says revenue, 37.3, and then that gets cost shared out, 60.40 based on the calculation.
Right.
Okay. Any questions for Maggie? Thank you, Maggie.
You're welcome.
There we go, the line.
As right now, our total amount of our revenue coming in is about 40, we receive 55% of our revenue, we have about 44% remaining. We're still billing out for tuition. Our state subsidy has come in, and we are on track to receive what we expected from last year. Last year we received $530,000 in state subsidy. I will address that later on in our budget report. As far as expenditures on the backside, starting from the bottom right and moving left, we have 43, 44% of our budget remaining. Our general expenses were $692,000. We have $4,118,000 remaining in our overall budget. And if you want to look at the bottom graph, the very bottom of your page, it will show you that January of 1314, we spent 41.72% of our budget. And this year, we had, I'm sorry, we had 41% remaining, and this year we have 44. So our spending track is right in line with what it usually is. All of our lines are in good shape, and we are on track to finish where we expected.
Any questions? I got them.
Do you want to wait for me to finish budget and then do technology? Do you want to just finish budget?
Yeah, do that and then go to Sean.
We're going to jump, Sean's going to do technology policies when I'm done with the budget. I'm going to pass out the cost center summary as we stand right now, based on our expenditures that we have rolled out. As you know, we have rolled out our entire budget. Tonight was our last piece with the Adult Ed budget. You've seen every department per date in small detail, and this is a cost center summary that we have to provide based on state statute as far as reporting our budget to the state. So our regular instruction right now is up $233,000. Going through this today, and looking at it again, as far as 3-8 instruction, pre-K2 instruction, regular instruction, secondary, alternative ed and English as a second language, all of these budgets are based solely on salaries benefits and the teacher, the cost of teacher retirement, it went from 2.65 to 3.36. There are some minor other increases in these budgets, but those numbers for 3-8, the increase is 73.5. Free K2 is 41,000, secondary is 80, about $90,000. And that's mostly just salary benefits and retirement. Special education is showing a $21,000 increase. Once again, this is an increase in those three lines that I've already mentioned. There are some decreases and some other small increases, but I'm looking at the large picture. As far as other instruction, this is just basically a change, increase in stipends for our coaching and co-curricular staff, based on our current staff. So actually, there's been a little bit of a change in staff, and some of the staff are not making, are not earning as high as a stipend as other staff that had in the past. For student staff support, you're going to see a $31,000 increase in guidance. Right now, once again, it's for the same three reasons that I've mentioned earlier. Health service is showing a decrease due to a change in personnel. Instructional technology at the elementary school is showing a decrease due to a lower request in new equipment. On the other hand, we're looking at instructional technology in the secondary showing an increase because of a, looking at starting to replace the iPads at the high school. Students, system administration has gone down, based mostly on the fact that your percent for the AOS went from 64% to 63%. School administration, once again, these are salaries, benefits, and retirement are the bulk of the increases there. Transportation has gone up, mostly because we took $10,000 out of special ed transportation due to the no coding regulations. We had to put it in transportation, under special ed, in transportation there. So that is just a movement of money. Facilities plan, operation, maintenance, which I know is not part of your budget, it shows a $58,000 decrease. That's mostly due to the fuel contract that I was able to lock in at $2 a gallon. We usually had budgeted $3.50 a gallon, and we were able to get it down to $2 a gallon. We, I locked in probably about, I'm going to say, six weeks ago. That being said, if you've been following some of the trustees discussions, our bleachers in the, in the high school gym are in need of replacement, they are becoming a safety concern. And so we're looking at possibly replacing the bleachers, and that is going to be about $58,000, $60,000 to replace those bleachers. But we've talked to the company, we can't get hardware to fix the current bleachers that we have. There are no safety rails to go up and down the bleachers, the steps are rather steep, so we have people that really have a hard time getting up and down the bleachers. So that's something that the trustees are still tossing around. Debt service and other commitments, this is the debt amount of debt service that we have for our outstanding debt. As we pay debt off, we are still maintaining that level of debt and applying it to other debt service commitments, and I believe the goal is to be completely out of debt by 2018. Darlene continues to come into a budget with a flat budget of $80,000 for her school lunch expenditures. So the overall budget right now for cost centers is up $256,000 over last year. If you compare your packets that we handed out to you earlier in the budget process, you'll notice that we've had to pull some things out of lines for improvement of instruction. For example, we had to take our conference and travel and our professional credits, the courses that our teachers take that we pay for them to take to further advance their degrees. That has to come out and has to go into that cost center. So there are some things that have had to be pulled out of the Booth Bay Region Elementary School, Booth Bay Region High School budgets. Those are the two things, would be your professional credits and your conference and travel. And that has to go into improvement of instruction, based on some of the coding changes that we're dealing with this year. Other than that, most everything else will be in your budget, as you've seen. We've tweaked a few things and changed, tightened up a few things, but there have been no major changes. The other thing we're dealing with right now is that, as I mentioned last year, we got, just a minute, $530,000 of subsidy, and we also had another $90,000 of subsidy that was provided to us as a one-time support to absorb the transfer of the state share of teacher retirement to the local share of teacher retirement. If I can get into my computer, there we are. So last year we had $620,000 of subsidy that came to offset our expenditures. As I said, 530 in subsidy. At that point, we were considered economically disadvantaged because we were 2% over the state's average for free and reduced rate. And then we had the $90,000 for teacher retirement to help to offset those expenses that had been shifted. The subsidy numbers came out last week. This year, we're going to receive $309,000 of subsidy, which is a total decrease of $311,000 of subsidy. So our revenue is going to show, right now, a $311,000 decrease over last year. We are no longer considered economically disadvantaged. The state's rate, average rate is 49% for free and reduced, and our rates last year were 43, close to 44%. So we lost that subsidy to support that criteria. So our subsidies decreased 311. Right now, our staff is looking at our tuition revenue, we're looking at other sources of revenue that come in, such as gate receipts and some other things that we do get. And we're going to be working on the revenue piece over the next two weeks, and looking at bringing to you a total picture of the budget, and then receiving some direction from the board on how to move forward, and preparing the final draft of the budget. We're hoping that we'll be able to get our budget meeting sometime around the towns' budget meeting. We're hoping that we'll be able to get our budget meeting sometime around the towns budget meeting so we can go back to doing our budget meeting at the same time they do so that we kind of have a budget season between the town of Boothby, Boothby Harbor, and the school.
So we'll wait till after the next meeting, and we might have some more information regarding the revenue.
I'll have more information regarding the revenue. We're really looking at our tuition revenue as far as how many students will be attending from other schools. Also looking at some revenue coming in from other sources, from other towns that are sending students here. It's not really increase in revenue because the expenditure is in the budget, so it's a wash. We have to show it that way. And so we are starting to work on that right now, but three-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars.
Loss in subsidy.
Loss in subsidies.
Well, it's something we'll have to look at.
Does that include, the, the Board Association just sent out their email today showing the projected change in GPA for each district.
Yeah, that was the same.
Based on the new budget. Is that the same?
Yeah, so if you look at that spreadsheet, you can actually look at it, and you can look at what we, what our, our state allocation is, what the local allocation is, what we received last year. The mill rate has also gone up from eight-point-one-zero to, I believe, eight-point-four-eight. So that's going to have some kind of an impact as well. And then that will show you what the projected preliminary allocations are. There is a bill in Augusta, we talked about this earlier in the budget season, hoping to move the special ed allocation for minimum receivers from thirty to thirty-five percent. That would be a small help. Right now, the, the increase for our health insurance and for the Boothby teachers went up nine-point-five percent last year. We have no idea what that rate is going to be. There is some word that the state is going back to a flat rate, which I think would be helpful to us. So we have, we have plugged in a ten percent increase in health insurance, but if that were to come in at much lower, that would be also a significant help. But these are still a lot of unknowns at this point as far as, as those, those types of numbers. But that spreadsheet, you will see the progression of.
Well, it's a little bit different than, than the figure you've got because they're just making an estimate on projections. But I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't in addition to.
Figure, I, the figure you're going to see in that spreadsheet is minus the ninety thousand dollars that was the one-time offset to help.
Oh, okay.
Trans, help to absorb the, the share of teacher, of the, not just teachers, administrators, mine, retirement from the, from the state to the locals. And the, also, the increase in that retirement cost is, was, as I said, two-point-six-five last year. That's gone up three-point-three-six. So if you just go through your budgets and take a look at salaries and benefits and retirement, you're going to see those lines are the ones that, that we have, and showed an increase, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Kelly?
Would it be possible, when, to have copies of the, what you're talking about, the budget, for the audience at the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
One last thing. I was, I was at a meeting, and I was, I was told that we were doing one with April vacation to make up snow days, and I want to let everyone know that that has not been discussed. And the other thing I was told was that we were going to start going to school Saturdays to make up snow days. And once again, I said that had not been discussed. Just so that we can put this in perspective, this conversation in perspective, is that last year, we got out June sixteenth with two snow days. This year, right now, having used five snow days, we're at June seventeenth. So we're right in the same week that we were last year. And certainly, if we end up with another month like we had from January twenty-seventh to today, we might be having a different discussion. I know with the legislature, they're looking at allowing schools to extend their school day if they need to make up, you know, up days. But at that point, I, at this point, I don't think that we are at that part of our conversation.
We're still within the same week, so we're doing.
We're still in the same week, but just the Boothby, Southport schools right now are projected to get out June seventeenth based on the five snow days. Edgem had a power outage day. They're getting out the eighteenth. And Georgetown had, did have to take the two days before Christmas to align with the bath calendar. They're getting out the nineteenth. They're my nervous Nellies right now because they're a little worried they're going to go into the next week. But right now, our, our dismissal date with no further snow days is going to be June seventeenth. So I just want to make sure I got that out there and that.
Dip it in the books.
Well, I'm not looking at April. I know a lot of people have plans and to, to, to travel and to go somewhere warm and sunny. And so that's where we're at right now with our snow situation. And the last thing I want to share is major kudos to our custodial staff. They have worked very, very long hours. They come in the wee hours in the morning, work late at night, come in on weekends. Moving this amount of snow, keeping our openings, our sidewalks safe, keeping our schools safe is just been a tremendous amount of work on a pretty small staff. And just a lot of, huge compliments to them for what they've done to make sure that we can get in and out of school. And there's not much more room to put the snow, so hopefully the snowmageddon is going to end.
Pass on our thanks to them, too. When I plow early in the morning, I see them here. At least it's getting light when I'm seeing them now.
I know.
Thanks, honey. Can you go to technology policies?
Any questions?
Oh, Kelly. Go ahead, Toby.
Is there a breakdown on tuition students, how many from Southport, Edgem, and then other places?
Not right now, I don't have that.
Does anyone have an idea?
I can provide that to you, but I don't have that with me right now.
Okay. Go to our policies?
Yep. So I'll start with GBEB, staff contact with students. And there are a couple of, a couple of pieces here that we wanted to update because of the somewhat murky water that gets created these days with all the different ways that you can interact with kids outside of school as a, as a teacher or administrator or school employee. So before I point those changes out, I'd like to draw your attention to the third paragraph, which explicitly states that there, we recognize that many teachers in this district, many administrators, many school employees have family or friends who are also students in the school system. And so these policies aren't meant to restrict necessarily the types of interactions they have with those, as long as they're professional. But, so, and that came up as we discussed, these administrators, you know. I, I text my babysitter, you know, on non-school-related matters to let them know when we're coming in. And that's not the intent of the, the two pieces that I'm going to share with you tonight. If we turn to page two of three, the two, the two major pieces that we wanted to add have to do with the second bullet down, which reads, "Frenending students are engaging in any other interactions on social networking sites or through any digital applications outside of school-approved activities." So that would be an example of prohibited contact that's listed at the beginning there. And then the third bullet says, "Also prohibited contact. Communicating with students on non-school matters via computer, text message, phone calls, letters, or notes of any other means." So again, as opposed to just talking about sort of traditional ways that staff have been able to reach out to students, we thought it was important to, to sort of highlight some of the, or the myriad of possible ways that staff might be, or could interact with students and make sure we're clear about the prohibited uses of the elements. Other than that, I think the rest of this is pretty straightforward. And I'd be happy to, to address some thoughts, or this is for your first reading.
Yeah, so we can look at this.
You can look at it, you know, between now and the next meeting. You can ask me some questions then or, or now, so.
Sure.
Yes.
There's water back there.
I was just curious about the impetus for this policy.
Well, I think it's.
I went to the site, the AOS ninety-eight site, saw it for the first time. Kind of took me, blindsided, had no idea. And so, yeah, I was curious about the impetus for it. I mean, we can think about what's going on in the media all the time, but why here locally, this is, I'm rolling now. And there's also, I saw some passages in the policy which I found probably need some clarification. One of the passages, I can't quote chapter and verse, but it talks about an administrator needs to be told if there's going to be some sort of one-on-one exchange between a teacher and a student. And that starts to get kind of odd, you know, if I think about having a writing conference with a student in my classroom or something like that. So just wondering about clarifying that language.
Okay, so I'll, I'll deal with that one first. It's, it specifically says, "Outside of public view." So I don't think that applies to school-related settings or, but it would apply if you asked a student to take a drive with you in your car or, you know, you met them in a, in a non-public setting. So I think that's the intent of that statement, so.
So it doesn't, I mean, I know, it's just the extreme example is, need to be seated with said student where can be seen in the window of the class, through the window of the classroom.
I don't think that's the intent of the language nor of, you know, the recommendation.
Is the intent that I took out that, that it can, you can communicate with the student if it's to, regarding a school-related or classroom?
Yeah, he's actually asking about a different bullet on there, but, right. And then I think the impetus of the policy, like all policy, is not to address an issue, but to prevent having to address an issue. And so that would be my explanation for why we're addressing these pieces here. It's to be clear with staff. It's to be clear with administrators about how we're going to use, especially some of these newer avenues to connect with, with everybody. And so it's not an impetus based on an event. It's to prevent one of those events.
Proactive.
Proactive.
Joyce?
I, I don't understand why this policy, at least I've been out for a while at Christmas time, but was it ever discussed with the faculty for input from them? The faculties of the schools? Or is that not something that's done?
Well, I think the, the requirement by law is to meet and consult. And we've talked with Mark about that, and we agreed that this would be the opportunity to, to talk about it in a bigger forum outside of the administrative team having that, the technology teams having that, and then actually having obtained these from main school management. So this, this would be the forum, like many other policies, for, for input, for public input.
So if we don't have a copy of it, we can't.
It's available on, it's available on the, on the website, so. Other concerns, thoughts, questions? So I would encourage you, Joyce, to, to get on, take a look at it, and bring those questions to the second reading, which will be in the next meeting. Okay, the second one is new. We don't have a policy that addresses this explicitly. And there, this one has two pieces, like a lot of policies. It has the, the overall statement of policy, and then it has the rules that govern the policy.
I mean, we've got some extras, can I stand them?
Yep. Okay, so the impetus for this policy would be that many school systems have found as they begin to use digital media to communicate that without specific policy to address this particular issue, those, those Facebook pages or a blog become public forums. And, and without explicitly stating that, in fact, we are not providing a public forum, it gets into First Amendment issues, you know. So people want to comment on your Facebook page, or they don't want you to take their comment down. People want to be able to comment on your blog, which might be shared as a school resource or your website if there's a comment section. So the idea behind adopting this policy is really to address the last statement or the last sentence in the first paragraph, which says, "The website, online presence," which for us would include our own websites, our school and district websites. The webpages that we put out are Facebook pages at the high school and the district level, and we have a district-level blog. "The website or online presence does not create, nor is it intended to create, a public or limited forum." So what that really comes down to is if somebody posts on a site and we don't want it posted, we can take it off. And we're not violating their First Amendment rights to have a forum in some public way. And so I think it's an important piece to add as our sort of digital presence becomes bigger and bigger, both at the, the school level and the district level. You'll see there's a lot in the rules dealing with assigning roles and responsibilities for monitoring these things. Like most policies, they start with the superintendent, and they designate whom might be responsible for watching these. There's some comment about meaning copyright, you know, and that's the expectation of the board for anything that we post, that we're going to follow the rules of that. And then all the issues that are around FERPA, around student confidentiality, are also rolled back into this particular policy. So that, you know, it's clearly adopted that the board, you know, expects our online presence to, to reflect the rest of the, the rules that apply to schools. Questions or thoughts?
I just want to, I think it might be helpful since you're not very, it's not very often that you're here, that people see the process, that with the policies, that this is what we typically do is that there's a formatted policy that's put together lots of times. It's presented by main school management. It's presented for a first reading. We all get a copy to look it over. Input certainly welcome from any interested parties. And then on the second reading, the board usually decides to vote yes or no after it's been finalized to adopt the policy. And Sean's been spearheading, keeping tabs on it because it is a constantly updating and renewing process.
And there are supposed to be two books kept. There's one in the teacher's room at the elementary school. I don't know if there's one in the high school. And it's supposed to be always updated with the current policies. I don't think the one in the elementary school is currently updated.
The one in my offices.
Because we've looked at it several times, and it's not kept updated. And I think one of the things says is you can find these policies in common place. So in the teacher's room is where it is at the elementary school. So it should be kept updated. I don't know who's responsible for that.
I would think.
The principal's?
I'll talk to Maggie. Yeah, the principal's office. It sounds like they have current books. And I know there's one in the superintendent's office.
At one point, I was getting things in my mailbox to add to that book, and I did that, but I haven't received anything for a couple of years, two or three years, to put into that book.
Yeah. Thanks, Toby. Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
We've done the current budget, cost center summary. Now, the only thing we have is we'll move to items requiring school committee action. First is recommend the school committee review policies, GBEB, staff contact with students, UNDC, school system website, online presence webpages, as we just run over. UNDC-r, school system website, online presence webpages, administrative procedures for the first reading. Feel a motion? Stand in. All in favor? Go on to business.
Could I ask Sean a question? Could we backtrack just for a second?
Sure.
Could we get some sort of sample of the Snorter balance testing or something that we can learn more about it?
Absolutely. So the next meeting, if we can squeeze it in, and if not, we can do it. Yeah, absolutely.
Great. We should know what's involved.
Is there an, you can send them online?
I can send them some stuff. I could, and maybe to preview, and then we can have a little discussion.
Have a chance to look at it online if you send something to us.
Flipped classroom.
Yeah, we'll do the flipped.
We'll do a flipped classroom.
I'll send you the work beforehand, and then we'll discuss it here.
Oh, jeez, way to go.
Nice, John.
I'm going to ask Stephanie all the questions.
Okay, thanks, everyone. No other business. I want to thank everyone for coming here.
I just have one thing to ask, Carl.
Yes.
Do you need balloons?
Oh, we have six people going to high school.
And when, what time?
After school. After school.
After school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like that.
I didn't know if it was a four in the morning, should I set a couple alarms or?
You have a teenage boy, you should know what that is.
You think they'll last?
You're not going to get one.
If everyone warms their car, if they're, I see, I just don't know how long balloons last. Never tested that.
Sunday heated bust out.
Luckily, it's a short ride.
Yeah, it is. Go quick. Good. Any other questions?
That's all.
Okay. And again, thanks, everyone, for coming. We appreciate you. And the next meeting day, six P.M., Wednesday, March eleventh. And now, adjournment time is seven fifteen, eight o'clock. fifteen, eight.
June.